All right, we're gonna go ahead and call to order the Los Olivos Community Services District Regular Board Meeting, November 12, 2025. I'll start with call to order.
You'll call Director Palmer.
Here.
Director Kennedy.
Here.
Director Nelson.
Here.
Director Farron.
Yeah.
Note for the minutes that Director Parks was not in the room at this time.
All right, did everybody stand for the votes for the decisions? Pleasure to meet you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, united. We do this all for liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you all for coming out on the last meeting for the big training. We'll go ahead and next item on the agenda is public comment. If there's anyone that would like to address the board about something not on the agenda, it's your golden opportunity. We'll go ahead and take Michelle to work.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. The septic tank industry maintenance standard recommends pumping septic tanks every three to five years, more often in special problem areas with a high water table. I have data from 10 years ago to the present from County EHS. Do you know how many septic tanks have been replaced or pumped and inspected in the past 10 years in just Los Olivos? Have you ever inquired in the last eight years you've been on the board? County EHS and some of you have proclaimed the cause of the elevated nitrate levels in the Los Olivos groundwater table is caused by septic tanks. Why wouldn't you want to know this information? Why did we mandate that everybody inspect their tanks to stop the problem? From EHS data collected, there have been 31 septic tank replacements in all of Los Olivos, and that's not just in the district. This is the past 10 years. Interestingly, in the last, that's replacements, in the last 10 years, only 235 septic tank pumping inspections have occurred in all of Los Olivos, not just the district. Only 235. Lastly, I find it interesting and very curious that some of you sitting up there on the board or at the dais have never had your septic tank give pumped, inspected, or replaced on your properties in the last 10 years. Now we know that some of you may or may not potentially be part of the contamination problem in the downtown core where the nitrate levels are elevated. If you do not pump and inspect or maintain your septic, you don't know if your sludge is going into the water table. Our family has maintained our five septic tanks for the past 25 years. Every three to five years, we pump out our septic systems and have them inspected. The inspection, once pumped, is determined to the condition of the tank to make sure your sludge is not leaking into the water table or the leak ducts. A report is filed to the county, and the county receives a fee from us around $100 to process the report. In this town, we are prohibited from pumping our septic tanks without an inspection. There is a legal requirement to report to the county. The local septic service operators can lose their license if they don't file an inspection report with the county. We do, we, why do we pump so regularly? It's because it's cheaper to maintain a septic tank than replace one. Ours has lasted 25 years. We know of Los Olivos neighbors recently had to replace their failed septic tanks for roughly $40,000. Last week, we received a LOCSD postcard in our P O box regarding survey for the location of the position of our septic tanks on the owners' properties. Have you reached out to the county to gather this information?
Thank you.
Because that information, those maps are on the inspection reports of where the septic tanks are located.
Thank you.
Kind of stem off what she was saying in a way. I got the survey also. And talking to other neighbors, yes, there are some people that have never looked at their tank. They don't even know where it is. So I'm not a septic person, but I do have the ability to locate septic tanks for people to at least find the inlet, you know, and the depth. So because we have a problem and we need to address it, we need to get it going as soon as possible. I'd be willing to do that service for somebody that doesn't know where their tank is in the affected area only for a very, very inexpensive rate. Just because I want to keep things forward, going forward until we can get this resolved. And yeah, a lot of people haven't checked their tanks, and hopefully the survey now will force them to.
Thanks. Any other? Anyone on line?
Uh, Catherine Roar.
Catherine Roar, go ahead.
Hi, I just wanted to speak on the informational items on the agenda. Where apparently in response to tremendous public pressure to have Mr. Savage provide updates at the beginning of each meeting, we now, for the last couple of years, have had this informational section where no public comment is allowed. And I've raised this, and previously District Council has informed me that it is permissible to have an informational item to refuse to permit public comment as long as there's no new information that's being introduced. And so recently, these informational items have begun introducing a great deal of information the public has never heard before. And so by making these informational and then not having the item addressed anywhere else on the agenda, it dumps a bunch of new information into the record without permitting any public comment, which really seems contrary to both the spirit and the letter of the Brown Act that really requires that the public have an opportunity to speak on any agenda item, whether it involves a vote or not, when it's introducing new information. And so if tonight again, we have a great deal of new information about this new contract dumped into the record under the guise of an informational item, I just really ask someone on the board to have a responsible conversation with your council about where the boundaries are on that and really what your best practices are, because it feels a lot like you're sandbagging the, the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to, Madam President, when the public comment is over, just a clarification of what was attributed to my comments, like an opportunity to respond to that.
Okay, thank you. In that case, do we have any additional public comment? Anyone else online?
No other hands are raised.
All right, District Council, yes, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a simple clarification. Public comment is required on items which are action items, on items that the board takes action on. And, and I think that is what I explained to the prior speaker.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. All right, let's see, next item on the agenda is the, well, sorry, the District Manager's status report.
Yeah, just really quickly, for those in the room, you're probably wondering why I'm sitting here and Director Farron is sitting over there. The feeling 100% and wanted to fund this discussion, sit away from everybody, so there's no other change with that, other than just kind of seating change for convenience. The Wallace contract is underway, the postcard that went out to residents in the district is a result of that, as well as certain that's online. We'll talk more about that later on. So that's the project status. So this, I'd also note that I posted a couple of changes. Council had some word changes and some tweets to the contracts. Those were posted earlier in their copies here in the room, if somebody wants to see them.
Thank you. Next item, any questions? Please, just out of the board. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Very, very briefly, as far as consent agenda is concerned, this one is a little bit expanded to include two resolutions. They're very kind of normal resolutions, though. We're, we're scheduling our regular meetings the second Wednesday of every month. And the other one, 2506, just officially designates me as the, or redesignates me as the General Manager Report Secretary. And that's, that's required at the federal level in order, in order for us to be able to apply for the, we don't have a physical address. And since we don't have a physical address, you guys need to name me so I can use my home address as our official address. So that's what that is all about. It's, it's, it just allows to apply for federal grants and about that, okay?
Do, if we have any public comment on this item? Any person in the room, one online, right?
I'll make comments.
I was just gonna note, do we need separate motion and roll call for C and D since they're resolutions?
Council, do we need?
You can take it all in one motion. It's consent agenda as a whole.
With motion, we approve items six to consent agenda.
I'll second.
All right, first and second, all in favor?
All right, let's go ahead. Director Parks. Director Farron. Director Palmer.
Hi.
Director Nelson.
Hi.
Director Kennedy.
Hi. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consideration of a letter of agreement with True North, the amount of $28,135.
Yes, we moved into business items here, really quickly kind of outlined in the business item itself. The, one of the things that the Ad hoc Committee has been looking at is different contractors to help us through the process. Importantly, as it relates to the True North Research Agreement, they are a research polling firm. The group spoke to several different polling firms, I think five in the end. Asked some questions of them to see, you know, how they would approach things. And if I may speak on behalf of the Ad hoc Committee, they felt that this group provided the best fit for what we needed. So their recommendation is that we sign a letter of agreement with True North Research to polling related to Prop 28.
Okay, did we have any public comment on this item? Anyone on line?
No.
Okay.
We approve of item seven.
Could you expand that for me? Could you expand that a little?
Oh, I would like to make a motion to approve item seven and direct either the General Manager or the President to sign it. I'll second.
Okay, first and second, any comment?
Just, just, I would like to comment, in addition to their approach, I think what made me affirm them as the right candidate for us is their specific experience with Prop 218 processes. So not just that they've done a few, they've done a number of them, so. Anyone for the other four numbers, the numbers of the council? Sorry, I said they've done a lot of Prop 218 specific work in addition to polling, so. Anyway, that is my comment.
All right, we have a first and a second.
Roll call.
Roll call, okay.
Director Farron. Director Nelson.
Hi.
Director Palmer.
Hi.
Director Parks. President Kennedy.
Hi. Great, thank you, motion passes. All right, next item on the agenda is the consideration of a contract with Regional Government Services in the amount of $28,300.
Yeah, very similar sort of process is followed, not quite so many respondents to the communication, which is what this one is, just to help educate the community. And then there's a whole legal process of documents that have to be sent out and so on that are legally required for Prop 218. R T S, Regional Government Services, as the name implies, it's a firm that does contracts for cities and special districts and counties and all sorts of things for, for various reasons, one of which is a communications thing. We also did speak to the person who put together our social media contract, she was one of the ones that responded. Again, in, in the end, this outreach firm has felt the best we can meet the needs for Prop 218, so it's the recommendations from the Ad hoc Committee.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No requests, you go line.
All right, any questions, discussion?
Madam President, I just wanted to note, I appreciate the work of the Ad hoc Committee on this items. The thorough work they did, so with that, make a motion to approve item eight, direct either the Chairman or the President to sign the contract.
Oh.
Also.
So there's, I do have one comment specifically on the contract. There's nowhere in here where it specifies the amount, the 28,300, and there's no N T E on the direct expenses. So it's referred to, so I, I would feel either if you can help us through amending the contract in the motion or bringing it back once it's been amended. I don't know. I would look to the General Manager for how you'd like to do that. I don't know that it's urgent that we do it today, but just as a matter of practice, it's gotta have, it's gotta have a limit in there.
Happy to take whichever approach you'd like. I can ask the motion maker to amend this motion, and I'll make sure it becomes part of the contract, or I can bring it back next month, up to you.
Well, I'd like to see, there's just not, there's the contract amount for the work, but nothing on, no limit on the direct expenses. So I think that should be addressed with the contract.
Okay, so maybe a question for Council is if I amend the motion to approve number eight and direct Chairman or President to sign a contract not to exceed 28,300 with that piece of that satisfactory counsel?
Yes, implicit in the motion, I assume, is that the language of the contract would reflect specifically the amount not to exceed.
So amend to approve number eight, direct Chairman or President to sign a contract not to exceed 28,300.
All right, thank you. Any further comment question? Roll call on this one.
Director Farron. Director Parks. Director Nelson.
Hi.
Director Palmer. President Kennedy.
Hi. Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is discussion regarding groundwater monitoring.
Yeah, we're scheduled to have the next round of groundwater monitoring done next week. This is one of the items that's been talked about before for potential delay or continue. We have the recommendation for your board, other than we know that as we move through the Prop 218 process, funds are gonna get tight. They are scheduled to come. We have a three-year contract with G S I. So just here for your discussion and potential direction this staff, you wanna give him?
We'll open up to public comment first and then come straight back to the board. Yes, go ahead.
So on the water monitoring, I'm just curious, because we got all this rain coming, and I'm just curious how it's gonna affect the monitoring of the wells. And is this the right time to do it? Is it gonna mess up what we're measuring? I don't know. That's why I'm asking. I don't know if that's the right timing to do it. It could affect it for a couple of weeks, few weeks, depends on how much rain we have, unless I'm totally off base.
Chair, if I may respond?
Yes.
For your benefit, in the past, G S I has said that, you know, it doesn't affect it that quickly. There's some saturations, problems that have to take place. So to get down to 50, maybe just if you're going in more, but for it to get in, things like that, maybe shallow winds, it's not gonna happen that quickly.
Okay, so here in our waters so high, I wondered how quick it was gonna affect it.
For sure.
Thank you, for sure.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any, anyone else public comment on the item? Do we have anyone online?
Yeah, Catherine Roar.
Go ahead, Ms. Roar.
Hi, I, I know there's been sort of movement in recent months on the board, some members wanting to step away from groundwater monitoring. And it seems, well, problematic on several fronts, not the least of which is that you spent all this money to put the wells in. And so what was the purpose of that money if not to actually do the monitoring? Additionally, since, literally since the formation of your agency, one of the main pillars of your purpose was to conduct groundwater monitoring so that you could understand the location and the nature of the problem and also be able to measure whether the steps you'd taken had been successful and if further measures were required, et cetera, et cetera. So it's inconsistent with everything the board has said literally over the course of the last eight years to now claim that groundwater monitoring is no longer needed, appropriate, et cetera. I will agree that it's outlandishly expensive, and it might be worthwhile looking for another vendor or at least try to get the more competitive pricing, because you seem to be paying a rather astronomical amount for, for this testing. But, but it does seem necessary, both objectively and because the board, you know, staked a claim that this was fundamental. So if it's not, I think it creates a bit of a, a question and perhaps a credibility problem. So I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you. Anyone else, one?
No.
Okay. All right, we'll bring you back to the board then.
Madam President, I have one thought. We're gonna have some discussions with the regional board shortly, and maybe we just table this until next month when we discuss. I don't know if it's critical of big action today, so that's just one thought right there.
Yeah, I think it's, it's a frequency issue and a hoofing point issue. We need the data, but the Water Board has its best interest as we do. And I would hope to get to some sort of cost sharing or agree to frequency. Do we need to test as frequently as we do based on now the baseline level we've established in the last two years? I don't know the answer. I'm not qualified to answer that, but so I'd like the idea for you to leave them and talk with them about how to, I finished my thought.
I guess you're done, so.
You got the gist. Thank you.
I think, I think testing is important, but it is expensive. We should be able to get some kind of cost sharing, or it wouldn't hurt to try to find a cheaper contractor. But I think at this point, it is important to get that information so we can at least see trends and see, is it consistently high? See what the trends are, because we're entering a pretty important part of all this.
My thoughts are basically, if we don't already have something set up, and we have some rain coming, it might be worthwhile in addition to the, the cost involved, to wait till after that to see if there is a change, if there is something that happens that has made an impact on it. I, I think it's important to have the data, but is the data changing? Is it same static? Will a rainstorm affect that to the groundwater part? I don't know. And I, unless we have a critical timeframe that we have to do it within certain times, I don't see a reason that we're not postponing it to get feedback from the Regional Water Board and to discuss the possibility that the, the rain may, may cause an impact. I think that's worth looking into.
I had a question, yeah, that was, I, similar to what Director Palmer, I was thinking as well, sort of doing every six months, could we do it annually? I agree, the data is important, we wanna keep on top of what we're doing, but yes, the cost is significant. And we do not have enough of the budget or a large budget. I agree with Director Farron as well. We are meeting with Regional Water Quality Board, so this would be a full topic to discuss with them. How do we, it's gonna be to get this done, you know, for reasonable cost. So it's where, so it sounds like the direction we want to get to General Manager, postpone this next round of testing until we can get clarification, potentially some help with the cost from.
What is our contracts?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask.
Contract, did you do it every six months? We did contract for having it done in November and May of this year.
I mean, if we did this testing, then when we talk to the Regional Board, then we discuss with them, and then it gives time to also discuss change in contract with G S I. So this one would be done, and then we can say, okay, well, the board, can we do it in a year? And what does G S I amend in the contract?
Yeah, we have out in the contract, we definitely have it. We can certainly rework through that, yeah.
What, what is the cost per testing process?
About $14,000 per check.
A year?
Uh, per session, twice a year.
So 30,000?
20,000, 30,000, there's a.
Half of our, that's the engine here, but.
Exactly.
Well, and maybe, you know, if we go annually and the Water Board wants it twice a year, they pick up the other, they pick up the other, get the separate second test.
It would be interesting enough for G S I, does it matter? Is there, is there an optimum time when we do it, if it doesn't matter when we do it?
Yeah, I look to them for.
Exactly. If we were gonna go on to do manual testing schedule, what would be the optimum time for us to do it?
I can think of those questions staff asked them.
Yes.
Yeah, because I don't know if we get, if you have to do it twice a year, if this season off, if you need that seasonal change, right there.
Sounds like you've seen that much difference, so having, you know. Maybe we can, sometimes we have huge fluctuations in the levels, you know, depending on how those come along.
I'll just, I'll stick to the plan here. I would like to postpone this current one, this current testing round. How G S I come back with their opinion about the handle and how it's especially for our quality board about cost, sharing the cost before we spend this $14,000. You always have to see if they come back in December or January, if that's what we, if that's, we're based on their opinion as far as the annual testing schedule. For our company.
Thank you. Make a motion, yeah, does the General Manager view G S I's direction?
Direction.
Right direction for me to move up, December, January?
What, so is it, does that what we want to do?
I think it's, have a discussion with them about if we can do it annually rather than twice a year. If you do it annually, when?
Right.
And if the Water Board insists on two times a year, then are they willing to pay for the second testing? That's my question.
So I can provide some background based on prior conversations with G S I. They, they were contracted to do it monthly if you want, once a year, once a year, whatever. And they are kind of the, one of the predominant firms you'll come across in the entire suburb, so. I can ask them when they think an annual test time might be based on what they know about our, our water here. But to, to ask, they're not gonna provide much of an opinion, I don't think, on should they do it once a year, twice a year, 12 times a year.
Yeah, no, we, and when, when it is, is there.
They can respond to the when, but, but not the how many times.
Generally, we're not doing it more than twice a year.
I know, I'm just saying, if, if that's where people's minds are going.
Yeah.
That, that's, that's a Water Board and Air Board's decision, not a G S I decision. They'll, they'll do it as much or as little as they want, if you want.
All right, then we'll have the discussion with the Water Board about the cost and frequency beyond. So are we gonna, just again, do, do we wanna have, do we wanna postpone this upcoming testing cycle? Or do we wanna follow through with it?
I think we postpone it, because I don't wanna go into a Water Board conversation saying we wanna change it, but we're already done.
Well, especially if we're gonna have conversation with the Water Board yet already anyway.
Yeah.
It's certainly a perfect time to consult with them about what their needs and desires are and what they're willing to help pay for, if any.
Okay, so we'll do that. We'll postpone the upcoming November testing cycle. And then heading the information to the Water Board and the recommendations from G S I about when will be scheduled.
So I mean, if, if G S I doesn't have a recommendation and the water board doesn't say, no, we really wanted it, you know, consistently for the year. So I can keep things moving to one, just reschedule for January, but, but, I mean, because GSI may not have a recommendation.
Yeah.
But if, how soon you think you'll get feedback from the water board as to whether it's said? Because postponing your month may not be a bad thing. If, if nothing's gonna change, they say, just keep doing what you're doing, then one month is not probably gonna make a big difference.
Great. How about this? Um, maybe this middle ground, one and I just bring this back next month as that information and.
Once you have the waters.
And I'll have something from GSI.
Perfect.
Okay?
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Okay, um, next item on the agenda then is, okay, you have everything, I'm sorry. So I'm on the agenda, informational items, starting with the subcommittee reports. Uh, Finance Committee did not meet, although there was um, the information in the packet today.
General Manager. Yeah, we met on Tuesday. And I think the, the primary headline from that meeting was that we are going to convene a meeting of the water, water board leadership, Senator Lamone, Assembly Member Hart, Supervisor Hartman and the district to talk about uh, potential funding options. And how they as partners in the solution identify um, funding, you know, funding path. That's on, you know, that's underway as of Tuesday.
Great. Yeah. Hi, Project Management Committee.
Nothing on the.
Technical committee?
Didn't have.
Not me, okay. Um, General Manager, District Engineer.
Which, um, uh, it didn't mean that one time.
Oh, right.
In the contracts.
Yes, that's right. We did, Atwat Committee did need, reviewed the last of the contracts and then made the recommendation for the power. All right, next item is General Manager and District Engineer comment.
Yeah, um, just, you know, in the agenda, of course, the first Wednesday of next month will be the state of the district. It'll be in this room. That's just a good opportunity for a little more of a dialogue. It's not a full board meeting. As I've done the last couple of years, it'll be more broadcast mode for those who attend via Zoom as opposed to Q and A from them. Um, but certainly looking forward to having a discussion with the community and telling you where we're at, that sort of thing. Um, so that's, that's uh, first Wednesday of next month. As far as the attachments, um, just if you may be wondering why, once we don't have a projector working, um, because it wasn't working, couldn't get it working this evening. So we are being recorded via Zoom, but um, no projection. Um, so by way of a status report, just real quick, you know, um, the audit um, is underway with MLH. Must be hard time. Um, you know, we kicked off the meeting, the contract with Wallace Group just to kind of you know, get, get it going for the design and third year cost ownership. Um, people saw the postcard that went out and the email that went out. Just uh, when I checked earlier today, we had, I think it was seventy-one uh, responses to the online form. And I've got uh, probably a dozen people have mailed in something via the US Postal Service. And there's another, probably a dozen, fifteen reports that people have emailed through. So I don't know how to, those are duplicates. I'm not trying to sort it out yet. Um, but information is coming in. And keep in mind, about three hundred eighty-five parcels, there are parcels that, you know, um, are one property even though it might be spread across three parcels, right? So three hundred eighty-five parcel doesn't necessarily mean three hundred eighty-five septic tanks. It might mean some number. In fact, we know it does mean some number less than that. So um, there's that. Um, I have met uh, various uh, people this last month, including Supervisor Hartman, President Kenny and Director Payron, Supervisor Hartman, talk about what's going on with, within the community and how we wanna make sure that nothing we do will encourage growth and so on. Uh, you know, what's happening here, because that's everything. So working on a meeting with county planning to kind of further discuss that. Um, big effort this month, if you go back to my priority list from a couple of months ago, and once we got the Wallace contract out of the way and pulling contracts, the next big focus was grants. Um, as I, as we approved resolution twenty-five oh six this evening, that is one more step. So now I can break down that barrier toward us getting grants at the federal level. Um, I've met the water board reps. There was a, a funding fair earlier this month, or sorry, last month. Um, I met with the I-Bank, which is the economic development bank, um, to understand what their current process is for giving loans. So they give loans in a very um, sort of straightforward manner that doesn't require collateral, doesn't require an in-depth credit rating or any of that sort of stuff. Um, because they're a California infrastructure development bank kind of a thing. Have agreed with them to check in every six months or so, just to see where we're at and keep them updated. Um, also met with state and local water board uh, staff to talk about the clean water, uh, state revolving fund. Um, and while, you know, all these processes are subject to change at some point during the process and you never know, what you hear at the front is how they will actually work out. Um, certainly, we, we would get extra points for being, as the project that we've defined thus far, you know, subject to sewer conversion. We would get points on our applications because it would be a consolidation if we continue to connect the city solving. Importantly though, we would not get recycled water uh, points on our application nor would we get disadvantaged community points. And those latter two, actually, if you look at the way they do their calculation to see, you know, their ranking, uh, those latter two, they give you a lot of points at the state revolving fund level. Um, not a whole lot we can do about those, although um, I do plan on having, continue a conversation with the city of solving to see if they're going to include any uh, recycled water components. Um, for those who were paying attention back in April or May of this year, um, the Eastern Management uh, area of the Local Groundwater Management Agency did implement a water pumping fee. So you pay a small amount for every acre foot we pump out of the ground. I don't know if that changes the math for some of the people that would potentially use recycled water or not. My guess is probably not, but you never know. So again, a good question to ask the city solving. Um, I also spoke with, spent some time, so we, it's come up in public comment before about this whole question about, well, would we do bonds? Would we do a, a loan through somebody like the I-Bank? Um, as two of our potential funding sources that would have to be repaid. I did spend some time talking to folks that do bonds. Um, they have a little bit shorter process. There's some interesting twists to their process in as much as we don't have a credit rating, which is not a good thing. Um, both the I-Bank and uh, the bond market folks said, you know, you can somehow partner with the county who does have a credit already, and or get the county to carry the loan for you since you're gonna collect this all via property tax anyway. Um, that might be an example. I suspect that getting the county to, to take it wholly is probably not something they would do since we're an independent uh, community service district. If we were a, a service area of the county, they would probably do it. Not for an independent agency. Uh, but again, something we're talking to them about, right? Um, both of them did talk about um, how different things could and could not be financed. Both said, yes, for instance, your connection fee to the city solving got financed over time. Um, they were a lot less hesitant, a lot more hesitant, I should say, about um, anything that's not uh, in the public driveway. Being they, they, particularly the I-Bank was like, ah, I'm not sure we would loan you money for tanks that sat on the property. Um, we might loan the individual stat, but we might loan to you as a district money. Um, again, maybe they changed their mind to tell you how many there were and what it looked like, but at least that was their, their initial comment. Um, let's see, what else is in this? Um, yeah, that's, that's pretty much it from a status report perspective. You did get a copy of the email or postcard. They're both in the agenda. Uh, encourage you to fill those out, send them back. If you have more than one parcel, I did get a number of emails from people that have more than one parcel and of course, a Google form like that, you only enter data once. Um, I'm happy to, I've got a printed version because some people don't like to use Google either. I've been sending out a Word version that you can just manually scribble out the, the information and send it back to us or email to us. Another thing that I included in my status report, it doesn't affect, this is from the drinking water side, not the wastewater side. Let's be clear about that. Uh, but the water board did send out uh, new and revised drinking water notification response levels from PFOA, PFOS. So all the constituents that wastewater doesn't have to treat for yet um, are now being looked at from the drinking water source side. Um, and much like with ours, they have notification levels and they have MCLs and all that sort of stuff. Um, I put it in there just as, as a kind of reminder to myself and the public that it's pretty rare that those sorts of uh, uh, um, response levels get relaxed. They tend to get tighter and tighter over time, right? So um, just something that ID one is gonna have to deal with, but not us, because it's on the drinking water side. Um, let's see, what else is in here? Uh, current um, cash balance is just over four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. The chart is in the, in the um, agenda. Can see how our cash flow has been going. Um, I didn't point it out when we went through invoices, but um, had a very, very small invoice from Civic Soul, which means that contract is working and they just, they do it all the time. So they process our invoices source. They do it all the time. So it's very quick for them to get through those. Just kind of nice. Um, it's been very easy from my perspective as well. Um, I think that was it. Yeah, so that's it for my report.
Great, thank you. Um, any questions or comments from the board? Uh, District Engineer?
Just here, I have initial contact with the current roads manager for the county. Partner. And he was still with him. Meaning the, uh, Wallace Group and E-SO, Lon, what is his name? I have a long professional relationship with him. Different jobs and his. But he, uh, he and I had a conversation at seven stage and he's been aware of this project and considers the county as a partner. And that's how I represented him. And anyway, uh, we had brief conversations about the bridges that need to be crossed for the pipeline. Issues are very aligned under the pipeline, I think they got it. Wallace Group needs to talk with the county about, so we'll set up for them to have a, a meeting and, and then Wallace can proceed with questions to ESO and ESO assigned the staff. Assist Wallace Group in getting whatever information they need so they can do other things.
Great, thank you. Um, all right, next item is Director comments.
Well, I'll start. Um, I've been gone for three months in Oklahoma helping family. I was able to attend a couple of meetings um, officially. And one I couldn't, I had, I think it weren't appropriate information to get out. But I still monitored the meeting, still was here. So I didn't miss anything that was going on, even though I was two hours ahead of, or actually, when it's six here, it was eight there. So it, it worked. And I, so I didn't miss anything that was going on and uh, now I'm back. Get back.
Yeah, just a few things. One, on October twenty-first, I did go to Assembly Member Hart's office hours just to reiterate our, where we are with the project and where, what our needs are gonna be from a funding standpoint. Not that we were gonna resolve anything on the sidewalk, but just took that opportunity to have the conversation. Um, I participated in the I-Bank call with Guy as well. And then I just wanted to follow up on the comment about septic inspection replacements. I did request that data from AHS within six months of formation. And the information, I think, you know, I, I don't, I don't know where that is or if it's been updated. But it was, it was not as robust as I had anticipated it would be from a record keeping standpoint of the county. So we should, we should um, follow up on that. We should know what that trajectory is.
I'll comment that when the wastewater management plans are developed. Process, uh, formation process, that information was requested. I actually physically personally went down and like the feature for all the final cabinets myself is that they didn't have staff that could do that at the time. So there's, so there's two looks at that that we have, but I agree that we get to look at it right now and see what current information.
Just, I'll forward you the data they sent me.
And it's a general market.
Do you want to, I'll send it to you.
That's it for me.
Okay, great.
Great. Most, it was busy. By the way, I just want to thank all the board members for all the work. Everybody's been doing a lot outside of meetings, trying to keep everything going. Um, we, that was um, Joan Hart, that was a good meeting. Fallout is, or the, the actual round is meeting planning and development. I was pleased at the sidewalk, which was um, informative. And, and thank you very much, Tom, for staying on, uh, involved, given your family situation. We appreciate it. Um, Director Parks, I also had a meeting with ERD, a consulting firm that helps with some federal funds. Uh, we passed the information along to General Manager Savage to see if there was some synergy that we could achieve there. And uh, also just want to thank um, General Manager Savage to do all the work on the survey. This is gonna, this is really helpful because it will save the district some serious cash. If we had Wallace Group have to go out and do that, that would um, cost the district. So if everybody volunteering, participating, that's gonna be a big uh, a big help. And then lastly, I just wanted to, um, thank you. The financials this round were really phenomenal, really robust.
County system.
Yeah, that's, it's really, yeah, I mean, that was very exciting to read. I was built for you. Uh, okay, well, that's it. Um, we did a motion to adjourn.
I'll move you adjourned.
I was talking six forty-six. What time did you say?
Six forty-six. Right, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned again. Thank you everyone for coming out this evening. Um, and next director with a, copy with the direct will be um, next Friday. So when I come, lefties have the coffee, talk about wastewater. Yeah, come on down. No, no, next Friday.
Thank you. We'll see you next, next month. What time is that? Eight, eight thirty?
Yes, eight thirty is, yes, next Friday, following Friday. But hey, so maybe.
Yeah.